Hello.
Good evening, everybody.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I can hear both of y'all.
I'm coming live from the bedroom of Trevor Patschke.
Uh-oh.
He's in my office on my computer doing a program, something he had to download for A and M that would only work on my computer.
Courtney's studying for anatomy, y'all better be quiet.
Human anatomy or animal anatomy?
Little bit of both, mostly animal.
There's Mac the Knife.
Where's Mac?
Hello, I'm here.
Oh, hey, Mac.
Hey, how y'all doing? Good to see y'all.
I am good.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me.
All right, good. There's my buddy, Dr. Strain.
Is this exciting?
Yeah, that's it. Can I have my glass of tea? I can drink my tea, right? It's okay.
Yes, is Curtis bringing us something to drink?
Yeah. Where's my water?
I'm just seeing. See, we can see.
Oh, there, yeah.
I gotta close the door right quick.
Give me a second, could you?
Everybody's all in their office and I'm in my son's bedroom.
I'm in my daughter's bedroom because my wife's got my office.
Well, my office, my office is at desk in the big room, so.
Well, I left town.
You left town.
Oh, where are you camping?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, out in the garage.
Just got away. We're pretty close, about 10 feet from the garage.
Nice. I like your heat shed.
Click your face.
Your heat shed.
There you go.
Where's Curtis?
Stacy and Elizabeth.
Yep.
So how?
Did I ask you to stand?
Sorry.
Mark, did I ask you to stand up now or later?
No, covered. But I got, I got those like gym shorts on.
Oh. At least you're wearing those.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was a little worried we were gonna stand for the pledge after that comment you made.
All right.
Look here, I even printed out my agenda.
Very good.
Wow.
Yeah.
I did too, but I had to have Renee send it to me as a separate email because I can't print off the Chromebook or the Apple.
Oh, gotcha.
And I tried to get into Board Book, but when you go to Board Books, they only, on the internet site, they only support that new one, the Premier. And it wouldn't let me log in.
Mine goes classic.
Mine went, well, on this, indeed, that's how we're signed up, but when I went on my laptop in order to print some of this stuff out, so I'd have hard copies and wouldn't have to be bouncing around a bunch of different screens. It only went to Premier login and it wouldn't let me log in.
Really?
Oh, good.
All right, looks like we got Elizabeth in here and Stacy's here.
Yeah, Stacy is real happy.
I don't see, oh, there's Elizabeth, okay.
Hi, Stacy. I don't see.
Yeah.
Are we gonna see everybody or we just gonna get scrolling three?
Yeah.
I guess Curtis is controlling that.
Do we, do we get to pick the three we wanna look at?
I don't, I only see three, plus you.
I only see three. Oh, there went Michael.
I see the person that talks and there's three small, small figures off to the side.
Hey, Michael, I see you now.
Let's jump, let's jump over there a little bit.
Oh, okay.
I haven't seen you yet, I guess I'm not here.
I see you, Michael.
You're.
I see you, okay.
You don't get to see yourself except up in the very top right-hand corner.
Correct.
It says you.
Too little. Time is 6:30, everybody ready?
Yes, ready.
Okay, uh, and then I'm gonna read a script right quick, uh, after I announce the meeting, okay? All right, I'd like to call this Lexington IAS Board of Trustees, uh, meeting to order. We do have a forum present of all board members. And with that, I'd like to read this, on March 16th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by the Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in the response to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify that the following, notice of this meeting has been posted online at least 72 hours uh, before this meeting, all board members, all board of trustee members are in attendance through video conference. We are meeting using a Google Meet software application which allows two ways communication for the members to the public. As we would in any in-person meeting, members of the public will be allowed to speak during the public comment. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. This software allow, software application allows for 250 people to view or interact at a time. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask your patience as we navigate unprecedented, unprecedented conditions. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please, please call the Attorney, Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at T O M A at O A G dot Texas dot gov. With that, Curtis, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Patschke. Okay, with that, uh, no public comment. Uh, in just a second, let's just remember that we will all get our chance to say something. I know this is gonna be a little bit learning curve for all of us on this, uh, as we get together for the first time through this, so, uh, please, let's try to make sure everybody gets their chance. Also, when we get a little later in the meeting and go by vote, I will ask, I will call your name and please respond, yes, no, a, nay. However, you wanna vote, uh, we're gonna take a roll call vote, just because it's gonna be hard to see everybody's hands, so. Anybody have any other comments or questions before we get started with the agenda? If not, then I'll turn it over to Dr. Knowlton for the superintendent's report.
Just have a couple of things for you guys tonight. One is facilities, there's not a whole lot to update here because and they're not able to do a whole lot right now, they're trying to get as much done and keep working as they can. They did finish the geotech boring they were doing, um, over where the new cafeteria is going to be. And also the survey is complete, so they're finished with that. Now they're gonna continue to move forward, um, as they can. Um, he said they were gonna continue to work just as long as they possibly could, but there would be some things that might start slowing down depending on closures and people, you know, being told to stay at home and those kind of things, so he would just, uh, let us know as he goes. And hopefully by May, we'll have more of an update with, um, more things happening with that. Um, any questions on that, on the facilities?
No. No.
And then on, uh, extra costs, COVID-19 extra costs, and there's lots of different funding sources that are, we're being told about. And there's a, the CARES Act that was passed by the federal government, there's FEMA, of course, to the federal government. There's a grant that was opened today that our elementary and middle school both qualify for. And then there's some state funding that they believe, um, could end up reimbursing us for any extra cost that we have to, um, endure during this time. And so the spreadsheet that I gave you at the beginning of our extra cross, extra cost spreadsheet. And that's just some of the things that we've had to pay for, um, as we've moved through this process. Today, we mailed out all the elementary packets, um, for basically all of April. And, uh, we're mailing out, um, middle school tomorrow and high school tomorrow afternoon. And that's run us, middle school and elementary together, um, ran us right close to, um, $1,200. So to mail those out, so we're thinking probably 2,000, 2,500 to mail those packets. We'll do another mailing at the end of this month that will carry us through May, so. Those are some of the other expenses that will be added to that spreadsheet as we move forward. Y'all have any questions on that spreadsheet?
I do not.
I'm good. I don't think I did either.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, so the next is, uh, discussion items. Our first is the board agenda items for May, uh, I know right off, we won't be canvassing the election at that point. Uh, so we won't be swearing in any newly elected board members or, uh, now, let me ask y'all that. Uh, we can talk about it more since it's not on the agenda, we normally realign officer positions in May. Uh, do we want to keep that on for May or do we wanna redo that once we do the election?
I think we should wait.
Yeah, we need to wait. I say just wait till November.
Okay. So we'll kinda keep that.
I guess that's if you're okay with still being your spot, Scott.
Ma'am?
I guess you're okay with still being president.
Well, unless somebody else, unless somebody else wants it.
No, sir.
I'll keep on at this point, but like I said, if somebody else wants it.
You're doing great.
So, uh.
We do need to appoint, still have the recording secretary on there though, don't we?
Uh, we could either leave it there or put it on the officers, we usually kinda, kinda take care of all that. Uh, we'll do a little research and see, I think, I think we would be fine with, with all the other precedences. We'll do a little checking and make sure we don't need to put something in the minutes as far as that we're gonna postpone the election of officers. I know it says in there, we will re-sign them yearly and it also upon need. But, uh, we'll do a little searching and make sure that we don't need anything to be voted on or whatnot, so we'll look into that.
Scott, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, ma'am.
Tasby has given the recommendation and the guidance, so leave everything as is until the election takes place.
Okay, I, I have not seen that, so thank you, Dr. Knowlton, for that. So that kinda answered that, so I guess we won't be looking again. Dr. Knowlton's taking care of us as usual. So, uh, again, if you come up with anything on, uh, you think of, we need to put on the main agenda, please let Dr. Knowlton and I, myself know. And we will go from there.
Mr. Sanders, just real quick on that, we had moved that, um, we talked about moving that date because of conflicts. So we won't have to do that now that there's not gonna be anything taking place.
Uh, thank you for that reminder, yes, yes, I had, uh, thought about that, y'all remember, we were gonna have to move it because of the athletic banquet, which I don't think is going to happen now with everything else. So we won't have to move that meeting. I, I thought about that this weekend, but forgotten about it already, so thank you, Dr. Knowlton. Okay, so with that, we will go to our next discussion item, which is the transportation plan, AC on buses and bus purchases, Dr. Knowlton.
So this is listed just under discussion item tonight, so we can still have a little bit of time, um, by the May meeting to make a decision to actually, um, take action on purchase, if that's what you decide to do. Or to, uh, vote to pay for the ACs on the buses. Bringing this back to you again, we've been talking to you about it back and forth. What happened between the last time we talked and this time that we were talking, is we got information about Franklin ISD getting rid of their buses. So every three years, they sell their whole fleet. And this, this time around, this, uh, cycle, they're selling all of their trip buses. So the buses that are for sale right now are all newer than our trip buses are, or definitely newer than our route buses. And have low mileage because they were used for trips and they sell them every three years, so they're not a lot of mileage on there. So, Mr. Marburger called and talked to the guy, looked at everything they had, and actually had him put our name on three of them just in case we decided to go in that direction. Now, since then, they've closed down just like every school in Texas has. So I don't know that they're getting a lot of, um, traffic on those cells, I don't know how that's going right now. And there may be some, um, options for us to kinda talk to about holding on to those for a while, if, if that's what you wanna do. I gave you, um, a new, emailed you a new transportation plan. What happened in that transportation plan is Ms. Dubey typed this up when she was here and she used, um, VIN numbers, the last four digits of the VIN number. Mr. Marburger, Marburger used the license plate number, and so that's why they did not coordinate. So, a new plan should have the correct information on there. Um, and it shows you kinda what the plan was that we had adopted. Now, we, depending on what you guys decide in the next month or two, this plan's probably gonna change quite a bit. It's probably gonna change anyway when they, we meet again as a technology, um, I mean, transportation committee to look at this and see where we wanna go as we keep moving down the line. So, I gave you a sheet that had three options on them, that is not the only, those are not the only options, we could have any variation of those options. But I wanted you to kinda have a direction on different ways that we could do this. All of these assume that you're gonna wanna AC the buses. If you decide you don't wanna AC the buses at all, then that piece comes out of all the options. Um, our plan says that we will buy two used buses in next year's budget. And we can change that to be a new bus, we can not do anything next year depending on what you did this year, we can move things forward and buy, um, two new buses for the '09 buses instead of those six buses, there's lots of flexibility on what we decide to do. What I need from you guys is kind of a direction of, what are we wanting to do? Number one, do we want these Franklin buses? Because if we do, I need to be able to communicate that Franklin to hold on to them. And are we gonna AC buses? If we're gonna AC buses, then we have to make that decision in May so that the buses can be sent to put the ACs in on, in the summer. There's some concern, I know about the age of our buses. So, if what Mr. Marburger is recommending is that we buy three Franklin buses, put them into our trip fleet, move three of our trip buses down to our route fleet, which would get rid of our three 2006 buses, his fear is not wanting to put retrofit AC on the, those three buses that are so old. Which, okay, that's great, but then all that does, I miss, um, Stanport and I had this discussion today, what that does is bumps up your 2009 buses to be retrofitted with AC that we will be getting rid of too, if we follow our plan. So, there's a lot to think about and talk about, um, on what we wanna do going forward. One of the ideas was given that we use trip buses, um, AC as many as we can and then use trip buses for those '09 buses, uh, until we get rid of them. The problem with that is, usually when it's the hottest, is when we're doing football games and volleyball games all in one week. So on Fridays, there's not any trip buses to use because we're sending two football buses, one or two band buses, and possibly a volleyball bus going in a different direction. So our trip buses are taken up, um, on those Fridays.
How, how long, it says Franklin will hold us, those three buses, how long would they hold them for, do we know? Are they gonna wait till we meet again in May or?
He, he didn't say, because they're not there. Um, my question was if they would, if they would hold them and then invoice us on September 1 of next year, so they didn't come out this year's budget. Um, and he wasn't willing to go there yet. He said they needed to kinda see how things were gonna play out before he could guarantee me that they would hold, let us have them and then invoice us on September 1. So I think that would be a conversation we'd have to have, if these, these are ones that we want, or if that's the pending, uh, decision, then I would need to call them back and say, this is kinda where we are, if you can hold them, we want them, if you can't, we don't. Or if that's an option.
Yeah. Well, personally, I like that option three better, I don't know about the.
Me, I like that.
Three used ones I like. I, I can't really speak right now for, you know, putting AC in, you know, three older buses. But these things new would be well over a hundred grand each, wouldn't they? Or right around a hundred grand?
Yes, yes. And these are 77 passenger, and what we, we currently purchase, when we purchase, or the things we've gotten recently have been 71, so they're a little bit larger, which that's a plus. They already have AC on them, um, so they're ready.
They have belts, correct?
Do what?
They have belts, they have seat belts already on them too, I see.
Yes.
Yep, that's good.
Have we looked at the, um, I don't know what they have for school buses, but like the Kelly Blue Book or whatever, are these prices in line for a used bus?
I, I haven't pulled Kelly on these particular, um, three, I do know that these are, um, running comparable to anything we found in, um, like when we purchase buses for these year models, because these are so much newer, you can't really find this year model just used out there, because most people, when they get rid of them, they're five or six years older.
Uh, I've got a quick question here, these three buses would go into the trip fleet, right?
Yes.
Now let me ask you this. I know it's probably not much, but I don't even know if they're available. On that list, you talk about three of the buses, no, four of the buses have underneath storage on both sides. Would that, if, if we were to do something like that, would that save pulling a trailer on some of these?
I asked him about that, um, I asked Mr. Marburger about that when we first got the list, because when we first got the list, he just called them to talk about each bus. Um, what he said is that in the past, we've had some with those underneath storage and we never used them. And so he thought it was a waste for the extra cost. He talked to the transportation director in Franklin about each bus. And basically, that's how they narrowed it down to the three he thought were the best deals for the money and the mileage and the year models.
Okay, well, let, let me ask you this, were we pulling a trailer? I, I just assumed we were pulling a trailer in the past because we didn't have any buses with that storage. I don't remember ever seeing any of our buses with that, but I know I hadn't been on the board that long. So have we just went with pulling trailers just because it was, we didn't have buses and the instructor would prefer that? I, I guess what I'm trying to do is keep one vehicle off the, off the road. You know, if those two cost $2,000 more, I know we spend that much on wear and tear and fuel on a vehicle.
Sure.
By pulling a truck and trailer.
I don't know how big these are, but I, they're not gonna be as big as like a charter bus store. And so, uh, Mr. Marburger's pointing on, because I said band instruments, you know, in there, and his, he said a lot of the larger band instruments wouldn't fit in those compartments anyway.
Okay. Okay, well, like I said, that's fine, it's just one of those things, I really hadn't even thought about it till I saw this list and it started me thinking.
You know, I feel like he, he really knows these buses well and he's the one that called and, and they talked for each bus and, and this is his, his area of expertise and he feels like those three are the best deal, um, on there.
Okay, well, it looked like there were some that had lower mi, lower mileage and less, hours less mileage than the three that y'all are kinda talking about, what was it, 16, 17? 14, 15, 16?
It's 15, 17.
Those are 54 passengers.
Rather than 77, that was two that you're talking about, Scott, I think.
No, I, I, I just, I discarded the one up at the top. Uh, the number eight is a 54 passenger, 14 is a 54 passenger, but then 15 through 23, well, maybe that, maybe that's what it is, maybe you're right, maybe by the time you take 18, 20, 21, and 22 with the underneath storage, then that gets it. Yeah, the only one that would be. I just kinda noticed that there was a little bit of price, I didn't notice that the two of them were 54 and I just.
I just kind of noticed that there was a little bit of price. I did notice that the two of them were fifty-four and I discounted those real fast.
Yeah, the only other one that's left open would be number eleven. And that one's got.
Twenty-two.
Twelve hundred dollars on it.
Yeah.
Or twenty-two, basically, yeah, twenty-two.
Well, that eighteen's got twenty-three on it.
That's one of them he's looking at.
I know, I know. And that's the reason I'm saying it's got more miles. Less hours, but more miles.
Well, you're right. It's only a thousand dollars less.
Yeah. So you know, that, that's the reason I was just looking. I'm not, I'm just asking some questions here about, you know, just, just looking.
Yeah, and it might have been something to do with the cosmetic condition of it too. Who knows?
And it could be. I don't know what all they look like. Because like I say, there's, you know. That's, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm comfortable with any of them. If he, if he's worked through them and, and talked to them and those are the ones he wants. I just ask him. So if anybody quizzes me, I can say. Nope, the question was asked. We're comfortable with these. So does anybody have any other comments or thoughts on this at this point? Do you want Dr. Knowlton to continue investigating option three? I've heard a couple of y'all say that. Or is y'all want one of the other options looked at also?
I think option three is a good option.
I'm good with three.
I like three, but when we come down to put the air conditioner on those oh nine buses that reasonably we're going to get rid of in a couple of years. The second you decide to get rid of a bus, it's only worth five hundred bucks. So, you know.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you this, Dr. Knowlton. At one time y'all had talked about if we were to AC some of the buses. That maybe we wouldn't. AC the shorter route buses. Is there some way that those buses, the oh nines, instead of spending that money? Because what, there's two oh nines in the fleet?
Yes.
Is that right?
Oh, well, there's, one of them is, one of them is one of the new used ones we bought.
We've got three oh nines, but one of them has a new engine in it.
Right.
Right, right.
We wouldn't get rid of it right now.
Well, like I say, and also looking at the mileage, two of the oh nines have just over eighty thousand miles. The other one is on up there, not quite double, but getting close, so.
But you gotta remember.
It's a hundred and eighteen miles. So I guess that's where I'm kind of going is, are you? Is that still a possibility of only doing the longer routes and the shorter routes maybe stay away from, or are you?
If we do that, it's going to move buses around. So he's going to have to move buses on different routes. And then the other thing is just going to be if that's the direction that we want to go, then, then we can go that route. My fear is. There being buses without air conditioning on them and, and you know, this child being hot versus that child being in an air conditioned bus. But.
Well, and if we use those new route buses on those long bus routes, then you're putting a lot of miles in. I know that those roads are hard on the buses too.
I agree. The two thousand and nine, the two two thousand and nine that could possibly move up in where they are. Would be the ones that would be a little bit leery to, you know, add seven thousand dollars to.
Right.
To get an AC put on it, but. You know, it's so fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars. Got to decide, is it worth having all buses AC for that year or two years that we're going to have those or not?
I don't know how. I don't know how you can't do them all. Because the backlash from that, to your point, I mean. Why does Billy get to have an AC bus and Bobby doesn't? I mean, that will, we will hear that.
I'm assuming all this money is going to be in a budget and we've got it to spend, seeing how we're fixing buildings and building and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, and had that conversation with another board member this afternoon. I mean, the, we've got. We've got money that we can use for, we can pull fund balance out to do the air conditioning, if that's what we decide to do. And we can see if Franklin will wait till September 1 and we can build it into the budget next year. Or we can do it now and pull it out of fund balance. However, we may not have to make that amendment just yet because with the things as they are right now. We're, we're having extra costs that we think we're going to get reimbursed for. But we also have some costs that we're not spending. Our utilities, our diesel, our supplies, our trips, our hotels, our meals. All of that is not being spent right now. In fact, we have some money that I'm going to come back to you in May and talk to you about on CTE. That we have to spend on CTE that we're probably not going to meet those requirements right now because we're not going to all of the. Shows and conferences and conventions and all that, but can be moved over on. Projects where we're going to use, kind of do some things in the ag shop, redo the awning and things like that that I was going to pull money out of maintenance for. Now we can move CTE money over there to do that because we're not going to be doing, spending all this money that we normally spend on. Conventions and shows and contests and flights and meals and hotels and all that.
Do we have any idea how much money we're talking about there, Tanya?
As far as that's concerned?
Right.
No, I, I don't have a number. I'll have a number for you in May that'll show you what we need to move over. I'm still waiting to see. They haven't canceled everything. Of course, they've canceled, you know, all the shows, the FFA shows and we haven't gone to a lot of the hotels. That we usually pay in meals and stuff like that. But I haven't started coming up with what number we're going to move over yet.
You know, you, you just have to assume it may take a year or two, but it's, but everybody's going to be strapped for cash. The federal government, the state government, you just have to assume they're going to tap the money we didn't use, but you know, it's okay. You know. Golly, even hiring, we're, we're sure we're having school next year, right?
Well, I sure hope so.
I hope so. Yeah, I know.
Oklahoma has told their superintendents to plan for. Remote instruction at the beginning of the year with hopefully physical after Labor Day.
Wow.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
Well, you know, you know, the problem is most of these viruses will have like a, a secondary hump or curve. They're saying that South Korea jumped on top of theirs pretty quick, to the point that they released their people, but now they're getting a second peak. And there's a virology professor at A and M, not that it counts, and just makes me sound like I know what I'm talking about. But he thinks our second peak will happen sometime late in the fall.
Right, right.
Yeah, we don't know. The, the thing that we benefit from right now is that as long as we're instructing kids.
Yeah.
The money keeps flowing. Now, if they change that at some point, but what they've done right now for this year, we still get our funding based on the formula that was already in place.
Yeah. You know, you, you can't, you can't possibly anticipate all the junk that's happening, but you know, guy, you just. Have to soon, everybody, everybody's money's fixing to just fall apart. So little, little bit leery there.
So. Do y'all?
Well, Tanya, it sounds like I would continue with option three. And let's try to figure out those older buses, whether we really got to do them or not and go from there.
I would also try to get it to come out of September. Pay invoice, get them now, invoice them in September would be my preference.
All right, that's what I.
Very about putting air conditioners on the two thousand and nine buses.
So if I can come up with a different option for that, we'll, we'll bring it back or I may talk about if it's only two, could we squeeze? You know, those out of the trips for the first.
Right.
I mean, who knows what the weather will be. I mean, it could be cooler in August. No one ever really knows. It is Texas.
If we're not in school, then.
Yeah.
But we also have that activity bus that we might could use, you know, to, just for a few weeks to try to pull and not use those as much. So. Let me, let me see what I can come up with, but I'll come back in May with an action item for you guys to vote on that will go along with option three.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. With that, next is Senate Bill fifteen sixty-six. Y'all don't forget that we signed everybody up for. That fifteen sixty-six training. I think Renee was going to go back and get you Dr. Strange, since you're going to hang around until November. But I'll let you and Dr. Knowlton and Renee work that one out. So y'all remember, we got to have that done by May 1. We all agreed we would get it done. So we could do it online versus pay somebody to come in or we all go somewhere to get it done. So you have anything else on that, Dr. Knowlton?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. With that, we will move to our action items. The first one is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments over our consent agenda?
No.
If not, I will hear their motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
I got a second by Mrs., I mean, I've got a motion by Mrs. Stanport, seconded by Mrs. Betcher to approve the consent agenda as presented. With that, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
You approving the consent agenda, Mike?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Shannon?
Sorry, I don't stop.
He's in his shoe shed.
Have you, has anybody heard a response from Shannon? I haven't.
Yes.
Okay. And I am a yes. So motion carries seven oh. Okay, with that, we will talk about the. Consider and approve the educator appraisal waiver for the school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Dr. Knowlton?
The commissioner has waived the appraisal process. We're right in the middle, or we were last month, the beginning of this month. In the middle of the appraiser process. So for teachers and administrators to complete their appraisals. We really aren't going to have an opportunity to do that. So the commissioner waived that for this year. However, he required all districts to request that waiver. So there's a waiver process. It's automatically approved once we apply for it, but it has to be board approved. Similar to other waivers that we do. So all this is saying is that Lexington ISD will not be doing any appraisals. For the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Okay. All right. With that, unless anybody has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the educator appraisal waiver for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Second.
I got a motion by Mrs. Pashke, seconded by Mrs. Stanport to approve the educator appraisal waiver for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Shannon?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion carries seven oh. We got too many Ms. in here. Okay. With that, we will go to. C, which is approve addition of life skills teaching position and sped education aid. Dr. Knowlton?
These are the two positions we've been talking about for several months now. We actually have someone in the district we're going to move into this position. So we'll need to replace that. So we've been talking about for a while, but I need that official approval of the addition. So tonight you'll be approving the one addition of a life skills special ed teacher and then a paraprofessional position. These are requirements of several of our students at the elementary's IEPs. And so we have to establish a life skills classroom for next year.
Okay. Unless anybody has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the addition of a life skills teaching position and a fed education aid.
I'll second that.
Okay. I got a motion by Mrs. Stanport, seconded by Mr. McLendon. To approve the addition of a special ed teaching position and a special education paraprofessional position for two thousand. Or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Mac?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Motion carries seven oh. All right. With that, we will go to. Consider and approve the instructional materials allotment and TEAC certification for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Dr. Knowlton?
This is something we do every year. This is basically, we are, part of our funding is a materials allotment money that comes into the district. For purchasing of textbooks and instructional materials. And every year, the board and the superintendent have to certify that our teachers are teaching the TEACs. So we're following the standards set out by the state and that's what this document does.
Okay. Anybody have any questions over the allotment and the TEAC certifications? If not, I will entertain the motion.
I make a motion to approve instructional materials allotment and TEAC certification for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I second.
I got a motion by Mrs. Stanport, seconded by Mr. Hess to approve the instructional materials allotment and the TEAC certification for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Mike?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike, I mean, Mac?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
I'm a yes also. It's motion carries seven oh. All right. With that, we will move to consider and approve stipends. With that, Dr. Knowlton?
So I have two recommendations for stipends. You guys got my recommendation in your packet. And this, right now, we're in a really strange position. It's unprecedented. A lot of districts are doing something similar or have done something earlier in a resolution. But I feel like with the number of our staff that we're requiring to use their internet services from home. That we should be compensating them in some way for, for that as part of the material. It is something that we will list on our extra cost spreadsheet and put that on for reimbursement. But I would like to recommend that we give them fifty dollars a month for March, April and May. For their usage of their own home internet. And that will be for all teachers or administrators. Or clerical positions that are required to do things at home, like our payroll and our accounts payable. Both of those guys are doing things from home. To make sure all of that's still happening every day. So that's the first recommendation is a fifty dollar stipend for internet access or some type of hotspot or. Access that they're using. Do you have questions about that?
So it's basically just teachers, those administrators and then the clerical. It's not everyone.
Right. It's not everyone. It's just those that have a task that requires them to use internet service at home to work.
Okay.
Any more questions on this, this stipend?
No.
No.
Okay. Then go ahead, Dr. Knowlton, to the second one, please.
Right. And the second, the second one is more about if, when we come back in two weeks after this peak period, if, if we are able to do that. It's about those people that we're going to bring back. So some school districts are doing what they're calling premium pay. And they're paying basically time and a half for their hourly staff that are being asked to come in. We didn't go down that route at the beginning because we gave everybody a job. So everybody had something to do at the very beginning of this. We weren't under a shelter in place at that time or a stay at home order at that time. So. Everybody still had a job to do, whether it was here on campus or somewhere else. Now that we've been given this stay at home order and we're going to try to limit the number of people that are actually in the district and having contact with the district. If we go back in two weeks and we begin to do our meal service again. We have any reason to make people come into the district and have contact with other people, I would like to give them a stipend of fifty dollars a day for that requirement. My hope would be the majority of our staff would be able to stay at home away from everybody. But if we're asking them to come in and have that contact, I would like to be able to pay them a COVID nineteen stipend. We have some that would be required to come in. I figure there'll be about ten people that would have to come in to prepare food. We have six to ten. Um we have um six to ten that would need to pass that food out. And then we have things going on that would have to come in, like cutting checks, um issuing payroll, um board meetings when Renee has to come in for that kind of stuff. And then the administrators, of course, will have to come in periodically to get their mail and do things in their offices and respond to things on campus. Those are the guys we're talking about. Um if we come back in two weeks, we're talking about going to a Tuesday, Thursday feeding and a Tuesday, Thursday to come into the office and do anything. So we're talking about five weeks of that from now to the end of school, which is ten days. So ten days that I would like to be able to pay these people a little bit extra for that um coming in and having to come to the district and report for their job. Um we will do that on a voluntary basis. Got a little bit of pushback with some of our guys that um did not think that they should have to come out um once that shelter or that was stay-at-home order came about. And I told a couple of them to stay at home. I don't want anybody to do that if they're they're worried about their health or they're older or anything like that. So we will put out a voluntary um application, basically, and if they wanna help with food services, then we will let them come help do with that. And instead of saying all cafeteria workers have to report, um we will do it on a voluntary basis.
I might have missed it, but is this retroactive for what they like the food serving? Is it retroactive for that or is it just from this point forward?
It would just be from this point forward because before we weren't uh under that shelter. Then we were under that shelter in place or that stay-at-home order, um but we really weren't at that point. Now I think we're asking them to go out against what the the governor's asking them to do. And so that's the reason I think there's a little bit different level in that once we go back of asking them to come out um of that order to come to work.
Okay.
Uh I had a question real quick. Um I don't know. No, I know my job, or do you kind of doing any kind of, for those people that come in, uh any kind of letters or anything for them to be an essential, you know?
Yeah, we've already given them a letter, and so they all have a letter that they can use.
You got one too, Mac. You're essential.
I know, it's on you too. I've been going to Austin every day. Yeah.
Good for you.
Alright. Well, thank you.
Okay, anybody have any questions about the second stipend Dr. Knowlton was talking about?
Nope.
If not, I will entertain a motion, unless there's more discussion on the stipends.
I make a motion to approve the COVID nineteen stipends as presented.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Mrs. Pachke, seconded by Mrs. Betcher to approve the COVID nineteen stipends as presented. Okay, uh Elizabeth?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm a yes, so seven oh. Okay, with that, we will go to consider and approve grading policy changes. Dr. Knowlton?
So there's basically three different things under this agenda item, just to tell you about. The first one is not a board decision that needs to be made, so we'll talk about that one first. The first one is grading guidelines. Um the principals and the assistant principals and I met for about three hours the other day and kind of hashed this out. We pulled down um grading policies from other districts. We looked at what other people are doing. And then we looked at kind of what our teachers are putting out there. Um one of the things we didn't wanna do is hurt kids um that may not have equitable opportunities. And so we really looked at that in depth, and what we decided was we will um continue to instruct during the fourth nine weeks, but we will take the better of the third and the fourth nine weeks um as their fourth nine-week average. And then everything from that point on will be just normal. Everything else will be calculated as it normally would be calculated.
Oh.
So I gave you um on that uh grading policy, it shows you, and that's what will be given out to parents as well. It shows you examples of kind of how that will happen. The one point on that that we're gonna make sure that parents understand is to get that, um you still have to complete the course to get that grade, but at the end of it, you will get the better of the third or the fourth nine-week average.
So what do we do about people who do not participate, don't turn in their work and?
If they don't do anything, then they're not completing the course. So they're going to have to do some things to complete the course. They won't get credit if they're not in doing something to complete.
But they won't be able to get a zero for the fourth nine weeks because we state in this grade, you can't get anything lower than your third nine weeks.
But you have to complete. So if they don't complete, it will be incomplete.
Incomplete, got it.
Just like if you didn't do your work in a course in a normal setting, it would be incomplete.
Is not completing looking like it's a problem?
We have some that are, yes, making the, we don't, I don't think we have very many that are making that decision based on inequity or um availability, but we have some that have made the comment, they're just not gonna do anything. And so there has, you know, we want there to be some accountability for these courses.
That's right. I was just wondering how we reinforce it.
So that's the reason we added that complete. That's kind of what some of the other districts were doing as well. You still have to complete the course. So if you just decide, I'm not gonna do anything the fourth nine weeks, then you don't get that grade because you didn't complete that course. If you complete that course, then you'll get the better of the two, the third or the fourth nine weeks. And we understand that it could be a little skewed, and that's the reason we moved that rank when we talk about that policy in a minute.
Um is there any way to really stress that it has to be complete? Um because I'm not really seeing it other than in that little graph that it shows for the progress report, um unless I'm missing it, but where it says grades in the fourth nine weeks will not negatively impact student averages. The twenty twenty spring semester average will be determined by the third nine weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Um or even the one before that, it'll be better of the third nine weeks average of the nowhere in there does it say anything about incompletes.
Okay, we'll add something in there just to stress that.
Because I would think some of them would be like, oh, well, cuz, okay, so the first word's out of my daughter's mouth because I was kind of mentioning this to her, and she said, oh, so I don't really have to do anything this fourth nine weeks, and I'll still have a ninety-eight or whatever in one of my classes. So I don't, I mean, I think we really need to stress that you have to put in effort or complete it. Because nowhere really in here does it say anything about that it has to complete.
I agree. I know this is really hard for our teachers too, so we'd like to support them in some kind of way if we can.
Alright, we'll we'll add some language with that. And so that
And that'll be, and that would be in the resolution, right?
Well, that's just grading policy. So then we go into the resolutions. The first resolution is when we change the EIE local. And the EIE local is about promotion and retention. So that's um what K through, not K, one through eight looks at as far as promoting kids or retaining kids. And so we talked a lot about that and about how fair it was during this time period. That's a real crucial thing to look at. And that we really don't have a lot of um, especially with those lower grades. We don't have a lot of control sometimes over what gets done because it's not always a kid's fault if those things aren't getting done in first and second, third grades. And so um we, Mr. Lad really wants to look back at that third nine weeks average, the year average up to that third nine weeks to make the determination of whether retention is a discussion or promotion happens for that child. Um so that's that one um on the EIE local that would change. It would be a temporary change to that policy through a resolution just for this time period. And then next year, it would go back to the normal policy. Okay. Any questions on that one?
No.
Alright, and then the EIC local is um the class rank policy for local graduation honors. And that reverts back again to that third nine weeks. This is really not a lot different from what we did before. When, you know, we changed this policy last year to extend to the end of the year. And basically, we're just backing it up again and saying it's gonna be at the end of the third nine weeks. It is an end of a grading period at least. But um uh on that one, I think you'll see the word uh must complete as well.
Yeah, that would say plus completion of the last nine weeks.
Yeah. So um and that's one reason, you know, Ms. Garrison said she wouldn't want to release anything at this point on ranks because we wanna make sure they do complete those courses. They don't just stop and do nothing.
Right.
So that is the change to the EIC um local policy through a resolution. And and Mr. Sanders, I think you have a copy of both of those resolutions.
I do. So uh if y'all are ready, we're kind of talked about them, I guess, since they are a resolution. I do need to read them so they're a part of the minutes. So if we have no more discussion, I'll read them right quick, and then I'll open it up in case anybody has any question. Uh and then if not, remember, we will have two motions, separate motions on each resolution. I tell you what, we'll handle one resolution at a time. We'll do them as they are.
Well, I have a question. I have a question. Go, Scott. Um I'm trying to go back and forth here because for some reason, my workbook wouldn't load the resolutions. Um it has the grading policy. Do we have to approve that first because it's under action items?
No, the grading policy is not a board-approved document.
Okay, I was just checking because it's under our action. I was making sure.
No, I just did that.
The resolution stays, the resolution, Stacy, EIC should be seventy-two and EIE should be seventy-three.
Yeah, I was doing it under the Quickbook to where you can click on the link, and for some reason, it wouldn't take me. So I had to go back to the front and go under Board Book so it would load it back up, so.
Okay, alright, so y'all, y'all ready?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution for the Board Regarding Policy EIC Local Class Rank. Whereas on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, the government, the Texas governor issued executive order GA-oh, uh GA-oh-eight relating to COVID nineteen preparedness and mitigation, and through this action and in accordance with guidelines from the president, ordered a temporary closure of all school districts. Whereas on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, Lexington School District began closure of the district to protect the health and safety of staff and students. Whereas the board finds that a need exists to be temporarily adjust local policy provisions addressing class rank under these circumstances to ensure fair and consistent designation of local honors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Lexington School District makes the following temporary adjustments to policy EIC Local Class Rank. The determination of local ar honors, including valedictorian and salutatorian determinations, shall be based on calculations described in EIC Local with the exception of the senior year grades coming from the first semester and the grades available for the most recent final grading period before the district began remote instruction. Third nine-week average plus completion of the last nine-week courses for credit. Final transcripts at the end of the year will reflect rankings based on calculations of grades from the seniors' four years in high school as described in EIC Local with the following exception. Fourth nine-week averages will be the best of the third nine weeks average and the fourth nine-week average. The authority granted by this resolution to adjust EIC local calculations shall apply for the remainder of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year and in the calculations for all students currently enrolled in high school unless the board takes further action. Adopted this sixth day of April, twenty twenty by the LISD Board of Trustees. Anybody have any comments or questions on that resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of the Board Regarding Policy EIC Class Rank.
I second.
I got a motion by Mrs. Standport, seconded by Mr. McLendon to approve the resolution for temporary changes to EIC Local Class Rank as presented. All those in face, I'm sorry, I old habit. Mac?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Elizabeth? Mike?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott is a yes, so that motion carries seven oh. Alright, with that, we will go to the second resolution. EIE, which can uh concerns promotion and promotion and retention. Alright, any other, any questions on this one before we read the resolution right quick?
No.
Alright, whereas on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, the Texas governor is issued executive order number GA-oh-eight relating to COVID nineteen preparedness and mitigation through this action and in accordance with the guidelines from the president, ordered the temporary closure of all Texas school districts. Whereas on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, Lexington School District began closure of the district to protect the health and safety of staff and students. Whereas the board finds that a need exists to temporarily adjust local policy provisions addressing promotion and retention under these circumstances to ensure fair and consistent evaluation of student achievement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Lexington School District makes the following temporary adjustments to policy EIE Local Retention and Promotion. In grades one through eight, promotion to the next grade level shall be based on the year average at the completion of the most recent final grading period before the district began remote instruction, the third nine-week average, following the grad lines described in EIE Local for calculations. In grades nine through twelve, grade level advancement for students shall be earned by course credit, CEI. The authority granted by this resolution to adjust EIE Local calculations shall apply for the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty school year unless the board takes further action. Adopted this sixth day of April, twenty twenty by the LISD Board of Trustees. If there are any questions, please uh list them. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for temporary changes to EIE Local as presented. Second.
Oh.
I got a ma, I got a motion by uh Pachke, seconded by Mrs. Standport to approve the resolution for temporary changes to EIE Local uh as presented. All the uh Mac?
Yes, sir, yes.
Uh Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mac, I mean, Mike?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And I am a yes also, so seven oh. Okay, with that, we go to uh the District of Innovation Amendment Concerning Healthcare. Dr. uh Knowlton?
This is the amendment that you guys approved um last month to be placed on the website for thirty days. This amendment would allow the district to offer alternative health insurance opportunities as we find those. So it's been on the uh website for thirty days, and now we're ready to actually put it into the plan. So tonight, you would approve that amendment to go into the DOI plan.
Alright, if y'all remember, she listed all those uh DOI uh deals that we do and the one with the health insurance that we talked about are, is the last one in there. I think it's number eleven, twelve. Somewhere down in there. It's the last one I know that. I'm sorry, number seventeen. I didn't realize we had that many already. Okay, if uh any questions or comments on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the DOI amendment as presented.
Second.
I got a motion by Mrs. Standport, seconded by Mr. Hess to approve the DOI amendment for alternative healthcare opportunities as presented. Uh Mike?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
I'm a yes also, so seven zero. Alright, with that, I think the last thing we have or not the last thing, but the next thing is executive session. And uh when we come out, we'll have a few things we need to vote on, so we'll go back. So I think Dr. Knowlton, if she hasn't done it already, is going to send us a different link. Is that correct, Dr. Knowlton?
Yes, I'm gonna send you a link for a new meeting, so you'll need to hang up on this meeting and then go into the new meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and the and the time is seven twenty-nine when we're going into executive session.
Alright, we'll leave the call.
Alright.
Curtis, we're back.
Hey Renee. Hey Mike, your microphone is off.
No it's not.
I know, I see you turned it on.
Why can't I see me?
You're in the top little bitty corner.
That's better. I don't want to see me.
Okay.
Waiting on the President? Probably had to go get a cookie.
There he is.
I heard you.
You eating cookies over there?
Yeah. I'm back.
You're back. Good to have you back.
Who are you waiting on now?
Scott.
He was here and he disappeared.
I thought he was back.
Yeah, I saw him.
Since he's there, but where is he?
Here I am. Somehow I hit the mute button.
Oh, there he is.
So it can happen.
The time is 8:11. We are back in open session. And with that, first item coming out of executive and back into open will be the consideration of real property east of town on 696 East. I will entertain a motion if there's no further questions.
All right. I move that we publish for bid LISD's 50% undivided interest in Track 1 being 75 acres of land out of the Joseph F. Johnson survey, abstract 174. That's it. Oh, four.
Give the superintendent a permission.
Okay, four $6,000 per acre with the superintendent's.
Well, I didn't think we.
No prices, Mike.
No prices, Mike. And the way this motion needs to read is we're giving the superintendent the right to go out for bid for the sale of those two tracks.
Okay. All right, well I retract what I just said then. Okay.
You want to try again or you want me to make a motion?
Well, if you've got the legal and everything right there written down, you got the legal.
I do. Okay, I do. Okay. I make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to go out to bid for the sale of Track 1, 75 acres of land out of the Joseph F. Johnson survey, abstract 174, and Track 2, 445.9 acres of land out of the Joseph F. survey, abstract 174, and the J. Easley survey, abstract 9. And that sale of that land is for our divided half interest. Of both tracks. Okay, I got a motion by myself, Scott Sanders, seconded by Mr. McClendon for to authorize the superintendent to go out for bid of the sale of Track 1, 75 acres of land of the Joseph F. Johnson survey, Track 174, Track 2, 445.9 acres of land of the Joseph F. Johnson survey, abstract 174, easily survey, abstract 9. And that sells for our divided half interest of land. Mac?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
You there Mike? Are you muted?
No, yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, so the motion carries 7-0. Okay, with that, the second part is the teacher and personnel contracts that were discussed in closed session. And those are the teacher contracts and the probationary administrator contracts.
I make a motion to approve the contracts as presented. Second.
I got a motion by Mrs. Stamport, seconded by Mrs. Patchy to approve the personnel contracts as presented. Stacy?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I am a yes also, so that carries 7-0. All right, if there is no other business at this time, then the time is 8:15 and we stand adjourned.
Thank you guys. It went smooth.
Shannon?
Y'all be safe.
We'll have to work with Renee or Dr. Knowlton to, we have to, you and me both need to sign those resolutions along with the minutes. So we'll have to work with them and try to get those done the next few days, so.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes ma'am.
Those can now be, the governor has approved those to be done electronically. So we can take your signature and that way there's no contact that has to be made. So we can have electronic signature on those resolutions and on the minutes.
And Curtis has.
That is fine. And is Renee still part of this right now?
Yes.
Okay, Renee, if you will just, I guess, so we get those teachers' contracts out. Or I guess, how are y'all going to do that, Dr. Knowlton, as far as the teacher contracts?
We're actually going to put them in, Renee, correct me if I'm wrong, this is what we talked about, we're going to put them in Skyward for them to accept.
We're going to try.
So Skyward has an option where we can put them in there and then we don't have to print them at all. And they can accept them.
All right, then Renee, I'll authorize you to put my electronic signature on them this year. If that's the way we're going to do it then.
Okay, Mr. Sanders, I do have some bank stuff that you do need to sign.
Okay, since the district is going to be closed for the next couple of weeks.
I'll be around tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I can swing by. Do you, what, is there a good time for you?
I'll be here probably a little before lunch till the afternoon.
Okay, why don't you, when you get there, shoot me a text or call me, let me know and I'll arrange to come by and sign whatever you need signed.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody, appreciate it very much.
All right, see you later.
Bye.
Good night.